Good evening. I'd like to convene the council meeting of September 24th. Please stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Perle, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in bowing your heads. We come tonight, oh God, recognizing what an honor it is to serve this community by representing our citizens on City Council. We are reminded of our need for wisdom and clarity of mind as we consider and act on the business that is before us. Therefore, we seek your wisdom from on high and ask as we give our full attention to each agenda item and to those that speak to us in these chambers, that your spirit lead our decisions. May the outcome of this meeting be a blessing to our city and bring glory unto you. In the name above all names, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda, I would like to call Mayor Dwayne Tugle, the mayor of the City of Amherst, and he's going to discuss something with us.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I'm here as the chairman of the Central Virginia Planning District, which a lot of you who's been around for a while remembers the Old Region 2000. This year, we have our annual meeting coming up in October, and we're trying to do something different. We're all getting together. I believe each of you should have got a survey within the last week, a pretty simple survey, two questions. What's your government affiliation and what would you like to see us do as a region? This is what we're going to do. We're going to get together, we're going to talk on April 17th, I mean, I'm sorry, October 17th. We're going to have some ideas. We want to get together, see if we can figure out a direction for this region. And the reason behind this, we've looked at different regions. Everybody knows Northern Virginia is known for technology. You know, you've got the Roanoke area, they're the Greenway area. Southwest Virginia is becoming known for outdoor recreation. One of the examples I use, St. Paul, little town up in southwest Virginia, you can drive your four-wheeler off the trail down Main Street to the drive-through, get you a hamburger, eat it, and then hit the trails again. And they're booming. So what we're trying to come out of this is a plan for the next three, five years and maybe beyond, of when somebody says something about the Central Virginia region, something pops into their mind. You know, we want to be known for something. So we're going to have light hors d'oeuvres or heavy hors d'oeuvres at 5:00. We're going to start this at 5:30. Everybody's going to be home by 7:30. So it's not going to be a long, drawn-out night. But at the end of the night, we're hoping to have like a do list of what we want to strive and what we would like to move forward in this region, to make this region known as. So personally, ma'am, if I can approach, I would like to personally hand everybody an invitation to that.
Thank you. All means to... And where is this being held?
It's being held at the Business Alliance.
Oh, okay.
Right down the street here.
And is it public welcome?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I'll put this back, please, there. Her and I have been doing the, pretty much, the whole region together, tagtaping, and tonight, she's in the town of Bedford while I came here. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If not, y'all have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Tonight's city's council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public hearing, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. The items are consideration of approving the minutes of the September 10th, 2019 meeting, consideration of adopting Resolution 19-068 to amend the FY 2019 general fund budget and appropriate $1,415,217 with resources from the assigned fund balance health insurance reserve, and consideration of adopting Resolution R19-066 to amend the fiscal year FY 2019 CSA fund budget to appropriate $75,000 in additional funding for increases in the CSA program, specifically increases in special education placements in private daycare schools and residential special education facilities with resources from the CSA fund balance and the Virginia Department of Education.
So moved. Second.
Let me take a vote. You all right?
I'm mayor. I was the mayor.
Ah. So I should just, what do I just? Like this one?
She should be on the line.
Oh, got it. Thank you. First section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct procedure. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker may have, shall have, three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon conclusion of the public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. First is public hearing for the purpose of amending the FY 2020 budget to reflect the carryforward of appropriations for ongoing activities not expended in FY 2019, and appropriating supplemental funds and rescinding appropriations for both the capital and operating budgets for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and Ms. Donowitz.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. Each year, finance staff requests needed adjustments to the adopted budget based on items to be carried forward and the cleanup of current budget items. If you'll turn with me to Attachment A, I will walk through the adjustments and answer any questions you may have.
Will you put it on the screen? Put it on, so we'll get on the screen for people at home?
I do not have it on the thumb drive.
Oh, okay.
So forgive me. We'll start with the general fund. For the city assessor, we're carrying forward for a new version of the current computer-assistant mass appraisal or CAMA system, PROVAL. In community development, the carryforward of the remaining funds to replenish the demolition budget as a result of expenditures for an emergency demolition that happened earlier in fiscal year 2020. For the council manager's office, $4,007 of funds to be carried forward for the purchase to, for the purpose of purchasing chairs for the second-floor training room. For emergency services, the carryforward of remaining funds to replace the current access control system at the emergency services building. For financial services, $15,000 to carry forward for training and succession planning. Two requests from the fire department, $30,000 carry forward for fiber optics at Station 4, as this is the only station that is not on the city's fiber network for internet access. Also for the fire department, $25,000 for ballistic vests. It's the beginning of initiative to provide a ballistic vest to every riding position in the department. The equipment further advances our partnership with law enforcement, allowing us to work collaborative to help prevent violent threats and death. For human resources, non-departmental, $2,173 for a carryforward to appropriate donated funds for the international festival, for the, this year's festival. For the library, we have $4,998 to appropriate of additional state funds from the Library of Virginia. In non-departmental medical benefits, this is $260,000 requested for additional medical benefit costs projected for fiscal year 2020. Two requests from Park Recreation, $24,369 as a carryforward to purchase new furniture and kitchen equipment for Jefferson Park and Diamond Hill Neighborhood Centers, following the renovation with CDBG funds. And also, $2,500 for the transportation for the Neighborhood Center's summer camp program via a school bus and bus driver. For the police department, we have $71,557 for the purchase of firearms training simulator system. The total cost of this system is $96,557, which is offset with $25,000 of state asset forfeiture funding. Also for the police department, $85,000 to purchase scheduling payroll software. For the police firing range, $2,173 as a carryforward for revenues received over the adopted budget in '19 to be used for firing range purposes in the current fiscal year. The poverty initiative of $121,001 to appropriate the remaining fiscal year 2019 poverty initiative funds. Three items for Public Works: $31,000 for SCS engineers, which is the consultants hired by the city to examine the current solid waste management program and services; $5,600 to carry forward for seven computer monitor setups and two desktop computers, and this is to ensure that every staff has access to a computer workstation; $124,000 to appropriate for, because of the lift at refuse currently is, needs to be replaced. We have three transfers. The first is the transfer to the City Federal State Aid Fund. This is $54,705, and this is for the Arts and Cultural Grant that we true-up every year. For, also a transfer to City Federal State Aid, this is $50,000 to establish the local drug court grant. And then, $62,851 to be transferred to the Tech Fund, and this is based on agreement from June 2000 with council for the approval for Information Technology Policy Fund and for additional projects. City Federal State Aid Fund, $50,000 that we just talked about for the drug court, the $54,705 for the arts grant true-up. We have $3,000 for emergency services, which are additional grant funds from the Virginia Wireless E91 Services Board for the FY 20 Public Safety Answering Point Education Grant Program. And then in Fire, we have $1,708, which is the true-up for the 2019 Fire Program Grant, and $10,326 for the true-up of the fiscal year 2020 funding allocation for the Fire Program Grant. Community Development Grant, we appropriated $401 too much, so we're rescinding that $401 true-up, the grant award for CDBG. And asset, forfeited assets fund, we're appropriating $59,874 between the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Police Department for revenues that were received. And the Home Investment Trust Fund, we're trueing up this appropriation, which we're rescinding $45,908 to match the grant award. And the Regional Juvenile Detention Fund, the $76,158 of additional revenue will fund the full year of the Phase 1 salary study. $19,724, this is to appropriate funds from the Department of Juvenile Justice for a hydroponics unit, class fees for welding and other college courses, and a driving simulator. There's also a transfer to the City Capital Fund that will help pay for the HVAC for the detention home roof. The Technology Fund, these are new projects and the use of funds transferred from the general fund to the tune of $262,765. City Capital Projects Fund, we have $1 million, and kudos to Jenny Jones and her staff. This is additional funding received from VDOT for the Transportation Alternative Program Grant for the Langhorne Road trestle renovation and trail extension project. In Public Works, we're appropriating additional $25,000 from the Lynchburg Garden Club to assist with the city with updating and refurbishing the gateway signs. The next six items are true-up for VDOT for our revenue-sharing funds, to make sure that we have the allocations correct for these projects. $302,126 is appropriating unallocated urban formula funds to the Urban Construction Initiative. And we're rescinding $15,317 of VDOT Federal Highway Plan Program for the Safe Route to Schools. These were unused funds for Bass and Langhorne Elementary Project. And then, $78,307 is refund, is rescended from, for the Federal Highway Plan Program at the Deerington Elementary Project, as these funds were unused. And then you'll see the transfer for the detention home HVAC there as well. In the Schools Capital Project Fund, we have $9,600 for the rooftop lease agreement for the Dunbar Middle School. In the Water Fund, we're appropriating $8,987 that was received from a class action lawsuit involving price fixing and bid rigging for chemical companies. At the Stormwater Capital Projects Fund, we're appropriating $81,582 from the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Grant awarded by the Department Environmental Quality. And finally, the Fleet Fund Services, we have $70,000 to replace the Sheriff's Department van. We're $289,787 of auction proceeds, where Fleet will purchase the automatic vehicle locating software system, Fleet Management Information System software and hardware and other fleet equipment. $21,190, this is insurance proceeds received for a total fire department vehicle. Any questions? While I breathe.
Oh, I guess, do you need to hold a public hearing first?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Sorry. Yes. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? There being no rebuttal, we can have discussion. Councilmember Helgason.
Just a quick question, Ms. Witt. So the, I noticed the true-up or transfer of $260,000 for the medical insurance. We just did the second reading of the move-in funds, 1.4 million from the Health Insurance Reserve. Is this 260? Does that make us whole, do you think, or are we still behind?
The 1.4 million went to help true-up 2019. This 260,000 is going to help us with fiscal year 2020. I'm a little concerned, so I think we'll be looking at possible rate increases in January, so staff is working on that now.
So this 260,000 wasn't to make it, you know, what we, making it whole to need?
No, but it's going to help.
It was, it was just a transfer because we had that money? Is that what that?
No, this is an additional 260,000 apart from the 1.4 million. The 1.4 million was helping with fiscal year 2019.
Right.
This 260,000 is helping fiscal year 2020, but I don't think we're still whole.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. So the 260, I know is for, for, okay. Thank you. So what are you anticipating? I guess we'll look at that later. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Vice Mayor, move the resolution. Second.
All of us will take a vote. I have it. There we go. Thank you very much. Number nine, public hearing to receive comments regarding the program year 2018 FY 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program, and adopt a resolution approving the CAPR for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and that's Ms. Melba Walker. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan, and members of council. As you've stated, we're conducting a public hearing tonight to receive comments regarding the CAPR for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. This report will be submitted tomorrow. If there are no changes, or if there are changes, we'll submit those, but after the public hearing tonight, we will be ready to submit. So I've provided tonight just a brief PowerPoint presentation on some of the accomplishments that were made with, with the funds this past year. Needless to say, this doesn't cover all of the projects, but they were mentioned in the CAPR that you were provided with your agenda summary. So I'm just going to kind of go through this PowerPoint and give some highlights for you all and for the public to know how the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program funds have been expended this past year. And just to mention, Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Wright are the two members of our Community Development Advisory Committee that oversee these two grants for us, so if they may want to chime in for anything. If they haven't seen this yet, they'll get this in January when I do the presentation to the advisory committee. So this is covering the period from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. And the CAPR is required for these two grants, and this CAPR will just give HUD an overview of how we spent our money. Obviously, we have to submit to them periodically through the data system updates to how we're spending the money throughout the year, but then at the end of the year, we have to give them this comprehensive report. The Citizen Participation Plan requires that we have this public hearing tonight. On this screen here, you can see that, what our resources were this year and what we spent during the year, this past year, under the CDBG program, we spent $744,468, and under the Home Program, we spent $308,394. Those numbers are larger than you see the resources, but obviously, that includes some prior-year funding allocations that were spent along with the current year, fiscal year '19. In fiscal year '19, 99.8% of the projects that were allocated for benefiting low-to-moderate income persons, that we spent, excuse me, we spent 70, we spent 99.8%, we're required to spend 70% of those funds on low-to-moderate income projects. We're, our planning and administration is, we have a 20% limit, and we spent 7.18% on planning and administration. And then, under the public service activities, we spent 14.73%, or $108,373, and we're required to spend no more than 15%. So we were within all of the required percentages as far as projects and expenditures. On this chart is just an outline of CDBG and Home combined, mainly Home with the housing projects that were completed with, with the Home Program Funds. We did not complete our Chodo project this year. That is under construction and will be completed in fiscal year '20. We had some delays there, so we didn't quite get that one finished. Under the homeownership, we completed six homebuyer projects, and that was where we provided down payment assistance to persons who were purchasing homes. And then, under, we did four rehabilitations of homeownership projects. There were three rental units rehabilitated, and then there were 28 rental units with new construction, and that was, the Old Forest Village project had those units. Lencag, Lynchburg Community Action Group, and Greater Lynchburg Habitat for Humanity are the two nonprofits that provide the down payment assistance to persons. They did six projects, and Habitat provided $260,424 of match money for us under the Home Program, and that was done through volunteer labor and construction materials. Lencag has been, expended $116,000 on the four homeowner units that were rehabilitated. And then I just mentioned Rush Homes completed the Old Forest Village project. There was $150,000 of home funds that went into that project, and the total project cost for that project was $6,68,374. Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority expended $41,842 on one, the renovation of one public housing unit to make it ADA accessible. That was completed, and there is one person in that housing unit now. The Housing Authority also provided $7,412 for two housing units to be rehabilitated by private landlords. Under public facilities, which are our neighborhood centers, the College Hill Neighborhood Center was completed this year, and Daniels Hill Neighborhood Center, you can see there, $148,000 at College Hill and $176,000 at Daniels Hill. And each of those neighborhood centers included upgrades to the kitchen, the computer room, the bathrooms, the flooring, the ceilings, and site amenities. Under public service, which is our continuum of care, and we have the Coordinated Homeless Intake and Access called CHIA, I'm sure you've heard that, with the homeless response system. CHIA diverts households from homelessness through the use of a uniform assessment tool. This funding is provided to the Housing Authority. They house the CHIA staff person and oversee this, this project. This past year, they, excuse me, they served 222 families and 197 children. They expended $60,165 of CDBG funds for program support. Also with the Housing Authority, we have the Affordable Housing Resource Center, which is almost up and running, I think. But anyway, we do have a staff person there, and he has certainly assisted quite a number of people, trying to provide them resources for housing that they might be trying to get. So his data reported that he had served 415 people, and we expended $41,343 on salaries and benefits and operations on that project. Housing Counseling and Fair Housing at Lynchburg Community Action Group. This program provides housing and fair housing counseling to clients seeking to finance and maintain and rent or own a home. They had just a small amount of money left from a prior year, and we prepared a fair housing flyer for all of the April water bill inserts and expended the remaining amount of those funds. This past year, Lencag received funding under the public service category for Poverty to Progress Accountability and Analysis Project, and they purchased some software to gather data for demographics and services and housing assistance and to track that. They served 1,626 persons and expended $18,064. And then this chart here just kind of breaks down some of the racial, ethnic, and income data that, for the people, the number of households that we served. You have to speak in persons and households with this project, so this is just between CDBG and Home total households. You can see some of the racial breakdowns there for that. The public comment period began on September the 6th and ends tonight after tonight's public hearing. And as of right now, I have not received any public comments regarding the projects and the report that was prepared and distributed for public review. I know it's lots of numbers and figures, but we do do a lot of work with these, with these funds, and the community certainly benefits from the city receiving these two grants.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? There's no rebuttal, so public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. And Councilmember Helgason.
Just have a question. On page four on your slide. Okay, on this one, I'm seeing the two bullet points. Both of them, which like, look, as I'm reading it, both of them are the same denominator, it sounds like. It's a percentage of Lynchburg CDBG allocation and pri- It's a percentage of Lynchburg CDBG allocation in prior years, MAC, you know, funds, funding. So one is 102,000, and that's 7%. The next one is only 6,000 more, and that's more than double. How does that math work?
That, well, what that is, is the amount, total amount of money that we spent under planning administration, planning and administration, it only, that was 102,598 was 7.18%, 18%. There was more money spent, but the 7.8 is the 102,598.
So I understand that, but so when I'm looking at the difference, so the next one right below it, it looks like it's the exact same denominator. It says Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years funding, and that is only $6,000 more, but somehow, that percentage is double. We went from 7% at 102,000 to 14% at 108,000. And maybe it's of different percentages, but...
And I'll tell you, it's a worksheet that calculates it from HUD, so I'm not, they, you have to put in, you have to put in your program income, you have to put in the Bluff Walk program income.
Totally realize, I'm just, as I'm reading what it states, it sounds like, you know, obviously, the numerator changed, one's 105, one's 108. But both of them sound like the denominator is the exact same thing. It says that the denominator of Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years funding, the second, the third one down says Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years funding.
I'll have to research it and get back to you. I'm sorry, I can't answer your question right now.
Okay. Is it of a different number on that we're looking at, or, because it sounds like the same wording?
I don't know what he's saying, I'm sorry. I don't understand what he's saying, so I can't answer.
You understand, Donna, what I'm asking?
Well, I think it's because he's saying each of these bullet points is, it says Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years. He's saying that's consistent.
No mathematician, but you can't double the percentage when it's only went up 6,000. So that's 6% more, I mean, so.
Councilmember Hellgason, do you want to say something?
Yes.
No.
Maybe a simple explanation.
I don't know. Ms. Walker, I don't know the answer, but I assume it says the 102,598 is 7.18% of the amount spent on planning and administration.
Correct.
And then, the 108,373 is 14.73% of the amount spent on public service.
Correct, yes.
So there are two different activities.
Yes, sir.
And what is approximately the same amount will constitute a substantially different percentage of each of those fundings.
Correct.
The denominator's not the same.
It is, it sounds like it is on the wording. It says of Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years funding.
For public service activities.
But I thought that's the numerator.
For planning and administration.
So I thought the planning and administration was the 102,598.
It is.
Yeah, so that's the numerator.
The denominator is...
Each one have a separate amount of money, and the 102 constitutes only about 7% of that allocation, and the 108 is a much higher percentage of a different allocation. So you're not, you're not, they're not combining, combining the same?
Totally get that, but it's the exact same words. Of Lynchburg's CDBG allocation in prior years funding. So...
Is that amount on the CDBG amount? Because the 15% is the maximum of what you can do on this, though. Those sort of services.
It's the same words, but...
So what are you saying?
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're right. The denominator's different, based on what HUD says has to be in that denominator.
So does that mean we don't vote on it until we get the additional information?
I think it is what it is.
So, can we call for a motion?
I'm moving the resolution.
Second.
All is in favor.
Yes, yes, time for, for, no, yes, whoever made the motion, they can discuss it, I guess.
I made it, so I have no further discussion.
I'm satisfied that the reasoning for the difference between the two simply explains the percentage of one category of funding, and what is a very similar amount explains the percentage of another category of funding.
That's correct.
But you're not saying that each one is going to the same funding?
No, that's correct.
Is that correct?
So I guess why I was just asking the question is, because normally, it used to be based on what the total CDBG amount was, that you couldn't spend more than 15% on public projects.
That's correct.
Of which there couldn't be, you couldn't spend more than 20% of the total on administration. And so that's why, to me, it's just the wording sounds like they're identical, so you're not sure, but you think that is accurate?
I know it is, because this worksheet balances from HUD. So I know it's correct, but I will get it clarified for you. But I do know that it balances with the HUD worksheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Councilmember Wilder.
Again, I'd like to thank you for you and your staff and the work you're doing in our community, especially all the different partners, from LYNCAAG to Rush, to all the various partners that we have. These programs are so crucial for our citizens of Lynchburg, especially as we address poverty and other issues. So the programs you're doing are so wonderful, so we appreciate the work that the community is pulling together to make this a better place, to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Okay. Can we have the vote? Thank you very much. And now that Mayor Tootie's returned, she may resume her duties.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Thank you for that. Next, I believe we're at general business. And this section includes general items of new business. Number 10 is continuation of the discussion regarding the petition of Lynchburg Renting LLC to rezone approximately eight acres at 710 and 714 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential District and R3 Medium Density Residential District to R3C Medium Density Residential District Conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of an 87-unit townhome community. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the proposed townhomes are in keeping with the city's future land use map with a comprehensive plan which recommends a medium-density residential use for the area. These areas are characterized by single-family homes, duplexes, or townhomes with densities of up to 12 units per acre. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on May 8, 2019, and recommended approval of both the rezoning and the conditional use permit. City council conducted a public hearing on July the 9, 2019, and after closing the public hearing, city council postponed action on the item citing concerns with stormwater. Since that time, the petitioner has submitted revised proffers indicating that they would do a 30% runoff improvement factor instead of the required 20% runoff improvement factor. Previously, the petitioner had proffered a 25% runoff improvement factor. During the July 9 council meeting, council also directed staff to assess stormwater runoff impacts on the residents of the Lakeland subdivision from the drainage areas that include the Windsor Place and the Wexford Townhouse Development Projects. The assessment was completed by both Water Resources and Community Development staff. In this drainage area, which is, I believe, about 92 acres, there are currently five detention ponds. Four of those detention ponds are being maintained. One pond is not currently being maintained. It was constructed prior to our stormwater ordinance. However, our staff is working with the owner to bring that pond into compliance with the code that was in place at the time of its construction. The drainage area ultimately converges in a drainage pipe that flows under Lakeland Drive prior to entering the lake. This pipe was replaced by the city in 2014 and was designed to contain a 10-year storm. A site inspection conducted in August, August 2, I believe, verified that this pipe remains in good condition, shows no signs of overtopping, meaning that it's conveying the water, and the city has received no complaints reported with this pipe since its replacement in 2014. The assessment indicates that there are other factors that contribute to localized flooding that are not unique to the Lakeland subdivision, such as seeps and water tables that contribute to some leaking basements. The assessment concluded that the proposed development would not have an appreciable impact on the downstream development. Water Resources staff and also other community development staff are here to answer any questions that you may have on that stormwater assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Councilmember Wright, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's, Councilmember Nelson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, in past years, actually, over three decades, represented a number of residents in Lakeland, and I'm very closely aware of the problems that they have had with regard to an earthen dam, and particularly with the sedimentation of the lake from upstream development that's been ongoing since 1980s, at least. I'm also, have been counsel for the petitioner, Lynchburg Renting, and this matter came before us with a slightly different site plan some years ago, at which time, it was denied. The principal owner of Lynchburg Renting approached me, not as counsel, but as a city councilman. I did not participate in that decision, and asked me what he, I thought, would make an improvement in this, and I gave him four items that I thought he needed to address. One was to resolve the objections of a resident who, whose home was next to the proposed entrance of this subdivision on Leesville Road. One, the second would be to increase the vegetative buffers. The third would be to comply with the city's connectivity policies, so as to connect to Middle Street for safety reasons of all of those neighborhoods. And the third was to substantially increase the degree in which stormwater runoff was reduced below the levels of its state, its natural state. I do understand that he came forward with a plan, and it's before council tonight, but I do not believe that in assessing this, I can be objective in discuss, further discussing or voting on it. So for that reason, I'll have to abstain.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, so I have several questions. I'll preface this by saying that I've been out to the neighborhood now, since this first came before council, a number of times, including once in August during a particularly severe thunderstorm, just to see how, how the neighbor was, neighborhood was dealing with the, with the stormwater. And there's no question that there are serious water issues in the neighborhood. And neighbors have rightly, I think, raised stormwater runoff as, as a matter of concern, not just how it affects the flow of water across their properties, but then, of course, regarding the lake and then the dam. And so I just had a couple of questions. Perhaps this is for, for you, Mr. Martin. Can you explain again what the 30% runoff improvement factor proffer means?
I'm, I'm gonna let Mr. White address that, since he actually teaches this stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. So when the stormwater regulations changed in 2014, the state's stormwater regulations, the method of calculating runoff changed to something called the energy balance. The 30% improvement factor, or the 20% improvement factor, is based on the amount of area that's disturbed. Based on the size of that development, the developer would be required to hold back the amount of water that would normally runoff pre-development, or hold the, hold the amount of water back to the amount that was, originally ran off pre-development, plus an additional 10 or 20%. The developer in this petition has now proposed to add an additional 10%, so 30% more volume for the one-year design storm.
Okay, so, so the developer is, I just want to make sure that all of us understand what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Is that 30%, let's say, the, the plot of land reduces 100% of water, whatever that amount is.
Sure.
We're talking about reducing that by 30% here. So the developer is obligated to, through water management techniques.
Correct.
To withhold 30% of the water that would otherwise be flowing off of that property.
That's right, based on a particular design storm. So that's the regulation in place, and now the, they have to calculate it at basically the one, two, and 10-year storms.
Okay. And so how, how would the water move, according to this plan, from development to the lake?
Yes, so I think there's a map that is in your packet that just shows general flow paths of the existing development. The flow path on the far right of that map would be the place where this, this development...
Is it a dedicated pipe? Is it a...
No, it's an open channel.
It's an open channel through the, okay. All right.
There is a dedicated pipe where it crosses the street right across from the lake.
But otherwise, it could, by flowing through an open channel, it could impact neighbors' property. Does the developer have to get, one of the neighbors raised the question about whether or not the developer has to get an easement from neighbors?
It's a great question. So with, with the changes to stormwater regulations, if you meet those conditions that we've talked about for the, for the energy balance, then you're not required to easements from downtown.
So by saying we'd be reducing, not we, the developer would be reducing the amount of water by 30%? And so in that case, an open channel is fine, because presumably, it's less water than they would otherwise be encountering from the property.
That's right, for those specific design storms. Yes, sir.
Is that it? Okay. So the memo that city staff prepared concerning runoff in this development concludes a development as proposed will not have an adverse effect on neighbors in the lake. That's what the city is attesting to, is that right?
Right, because for those specific design storms, again, based on every requirement that any other development would have to meet, this one's doing more. That impact would be negligible within that watershed.
And, and you all weren't able to pinpoint that Wexford or the other townhome development mentioned had negatively impacted, the runoff from those developments hadn't negatively impacted the neighborhood, is that...
The only thing that we were able to identify was that out of the existing detention basins in the watershed, five were being maintained. As Mr. Martin alluded to, one basin was installed prior to the city's stormwater ordinance. City code does require, if you have a stormwater basin, that it has to be maintained to the standards that were in effect at that time, and city staff's working with that developer to go back through and maintain that existing pond.
So speaking in hypotheticals and not about the developer in question, let's say a developer doesn't fulfill his or her legal obligation. How can the neighbors be assured that if a developer fails to install the necessary infrastructure to retain the promised amount of water, how can they be assured that that, that that will be remedied in a, in a way that doesn't involve them having to put forward money in a civil action?
So the first step in that is that city staff would approve the developer's ultimate site plan. That would set those thresholds, that would set the volume of, of water that they could release. Once that design's completed, then the project would go to construction, staff would monitor construction throughout, and at the end of the project, a licensed professional engineer would have to then certify through what's known as an AS-Built, basically, a survey that goes back and says, "The pond is built according to this design."
Is that an independent engineer?
I'm sorry.
Is that an independent engineer?
It can be any licensed professional engineer.
Any, but who, who hires the licensed engineer?
The developer. That's it. Staff then has to confirm the AS-Built. So when those AS-Built calculations and the design would be submitted for staff review, staff would independently confirm it. Once that is released, then the project goes over and goes for perpetual maintenance. They, the developer has to sign a maintenance agreement that says that they'll continue to maintain it. If it fills in and reduces capacity, we require them to clean it out to those, to those levels that were per the original design.
What if that doesn't happen? So what happens if the developer doesn't do what the city has, you know, mandated that they do?
Then the ordinance gives the city right of entry... What
So what happens if the developer doesn't do what the city has, you know, mandated that they do?
Then the ordinance gives the city right of entry to go in and do the maintenance, and if neighbors are adversely impacted, then that would be a -- they could offer -- they could provide for a civil dispute with the developer, if there were impacts. But staff would make -- would ensure that the project's maintained, and if not, the ordinance goes the city's right of entry to do the maintenance.
Right of entry to go in and make the improvements and then presumably
And then build the owner, correct.
Now, is there a bond? You know, does the developer have to put up a bond?
That's correct.
That would be, then this money would be deducted from? How would that -- how does that work?
That's correct. The bond is in place during construction.
Only during construction?
Yes, sir. Once the construction is complete, we require basically 80% stabilization, that there has to be grass cover in effect all the way through before we would consider any sort of bond release.
So four years down the road, say, construction's complete, the, you know, the project's going on, but the ponds aren't being -- the retention ponds aren't being maintained, or whatever? The developer's not meeting, or the current owner of the property is not meeting his or her obligation. In that case, if a neighbor were to complain, the city would come in, try to work with the developer or the owner to remedy the situation. If they weren't able to do that, then the city would have right of entry to come in and make those improvements and then try to collect from the owner.
One of the things that's really different, I mentioned that these laws have evolved over time, three times since the period of time we're talking about with the first development. One of the things that's changed is we do have dedicated staff in place who do follow up on the maintenance, ensure that maintenance. So the developer would then set forth a maintenance agreement that says, "It's got to be cleaned out this period of time." We would follow up with them.
And that exists in perpetuity?
Correct.
That stays with the property?
Yes, sir.
Whoever buys a property is obligated to adhere to that maintenance
Yes, sir.
Agreement. Okay, so several neighbors have raised the issue of the lake and the silt buildup in it from projects upstream, whether, you know, if that's true, what does the law say about say about that sort of who's responsible in that case? If a party downstream is allegedly harmed by activity upstream, is that a civil matter?
Yes, it would be. I'll defer to our city attorney, who can speak specifically about the civil matter, but yes, it would have to be proven that that was the case.
Given the laws, it would be very difficult for the owner of the lake to be able to take any action against upstream developers. They're just -- you can't prove exactly which upstream developer contributed exactly how much, so, you know, ultimately, if there's a problem with silt buildup, it's really going to fall on the property owner to -- who owns the lake, to remove the silt. I guess in theory, you might have an action against the upstream developers, but the law really hasn't evolved to the point where you can really say we could hold -- they could be held liable. It's just one of the unfortunate things that goes with development, that the downstream person is going to get the silt, just like the person who builds in the low-lying lot is going to get the runoff from all the adjoining, you know, properties.
So, thank you for that. One of the neighbors, at least one neighbor, mentioned, you know, about the city not having protected neighbors from silt, and so I just wanted to establish whether or not the city was in fact culpable for silt buildup in this lake, and it sounds like the answer to that is, is no.
No.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And, sorry, I know I've been asking a lot of questions, so I'll be quick. So how much concern should we have as a community about the dam being high hazard? That's another issue that neighbors have raised about, you know, the strength of this dam. Are people below the dam at risk? And how serious is this risk, given what we know?
At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the Director of Water Resources, who knows infinitely more about dams.
Well, and I'm familiar with dam safety regulations, obviously.
If anybody is, yeah.
I'm not as familiar with the current status of this dam, whether it's in compliance with the dam safety regulations. If it is in compliance with dam safety regulations, which, as a high-hazard dam, the owners of the lake and the dam would be responsible for ensuring compliance. So basically, that's regulated by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, so they're required to have an emergency action plan. The inundation zone downstream is supposed to be mapped, and then if it is in compliance, then the hazards should be alleviated from the dam itself.
Okay, so the city is not really monitoring this. This is really a state issue?
This is a -- correct.
That they would then interact with the
The state issue, we would have -- our emergency services department should have a copy of the emergency action plan in case we had to respond to a dam issue, or failure, or compromise, or whatever. We should have a copy of the emergency action plan, but as far as the regulations related to the dam itself, that's a state regulation.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Halcison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I can appreciate all the, and I appreciate Councilmember Wright's diligent questions on a lot of the runoff. As we look at this petition, you know, I don't think we -- I didn't vote against it just because the water runoff. You know, I think we've looked at this over many years. The first time we denied it when there are 76 townhomes wanting to be built in an R1 single-family neighborhood. The petitioner came back with 68 townhomes. That was denied as well. Now it's 87. I think when we talked about this last time, it was a whole lot more than just saying, "If you take care of some water runoff, it'll be fine with all the neighbors downstream." Now, you know, we talked about this afternoon in our council retreat, about our second priority of city council is to protect neighborhoods. Each of these times, in 2007, 2015, and 2019, again, we see a lot of the neighbors, we've heard from a lot of the neighbors, that said, "Please protect our neighborhood." I mean, it's an R1 neighborhood. I appreciate a lot of the questions and the details, and I appreciate the answers, quite frankly, but this is an R1. What's being asked is to change it from a single-family neighborhood to not be a single-family neighborhood anymore, but to change the zoning to where it's a medium-density neighborhood, one that would encompass 87 new townhomes. This afternoon, we were going to talk about Airbnb, which we didn't because of time, but the Airbnb regulations are designed for one person renting the house one day. This is, could be 87 new renters every day of the year. And so with it, I think we've heard from the neighbors quite diligently over the years, that they want to protect their R1 neighborhood. If there's a real issue that says, "Yeah, we should change it," I haven't heard a compelling reason. I can appreciate the developer's desire to help mitigate runoff and water, but the dam issues are serious. I mean, the density issues are real. If we don't change it from an R1 to a heavier-density residential, it'll stay as R1, and will protect the neighborhood. And I think that's what we should do, is protect the neighborhood, just like we talked about this afternoon, making that our second priority of city council, that we want to protect neighborhoods. Here's a neighborhood we can protect.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Oh, there's a second, and Councilmember Perrow for further discussion.
Yes, ma'am. We thoroughly discussed this at the last meeting during the public hearing. I thought that, well, I thought that we were pretty well settled on the matter of whether this is an appropriate development or not, and seemingly it was, and the discussion focused really around stormwater. I raised several of the points that Councilmember Wright just reiterated about the runoff. I think the, adjusting the factor to 30% is significant. That's over 50, that's 50% above what is statutorily required, so, which is certainly significant. Less water is supposed to be leaving the property post-development than it does currently. So that can be an improvement, or it should be an improvement very much, to the condition of the lake. And to Mr. Wright's question about the certification from the engineer, no engineer would risk their livelihood with, frankly, one developer, and would misrepresent a case for one developer because they'll lose their license. So, no, absolutely not. We, as professional engineers, we stand on our seals, and if we don't have our seals, then we've lost our livelihood. So part of the business of engineering is integrity. So it doesn't matter, really, who is doing the review. If they put their seal on it, it's going to be good. If it's not, they're going to be prosecuted. That's the bottom line there. We, I think we discussed this thoroughly at the last meeting. I think we just need to move on forward. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Wilder.
In favor of the motion, I know the developer has made certain concessions and increased the water runoff to the 30% level, and also, the runoff that's coming from there now is coming from Wexford and the other property, so since it can't be shown that this one would add to it as well, and the developer is making extra concessions, I'm going with that fact there.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, and just to address Councilmember Perrow's point, I wasn't questioning the integrity of the profession, but more to just, you know, have the conversation about the impartiality of who was offering that assessment.
Oh, you can't just, no, I wasn't -- gah! Sorry, coffee issue. I think I need, I do need some sleep.
You need some sleep.
So, anyway, a little short, see if we had a good electrician from the beginning. Shorted out under here. It's brown runoff, too.
Yeah, it's not supposed to runoff.
No, it's supposed to be consumed. All right, so, yeah, I wasn't questioning your -- oh, thank you, thank you. I wasn't questioning the thing about the engineer. I just wanted to bring up the point that, yeah, you'll lose your certification if not, so
That's a good point.
But thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you. We're good.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Halcison.
Thank you. And again, you know, I think this last one, I realized that a few folks had talked about the runoff, but I think a lot of the items are, you know, do we want to protect the neighborhood? I mean, it's, we made that as priority number two. We heard from the neighbors almost unanimously that they don't want to see their R1 neighborhood developed in a high-density fashion, like 87 new townhomes would be, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Halcison. Any further discussion or any thoughts? Vice Mayor Dola.
Thank you. I, you know, at first, I was not really in favor of this development at all, primarily because of the stormwater management issue, and I, of course, have been out there also a couple of times in walks of property, but based on the 30% increase in the stormwater management runoff, and also on the cities, the staff of the city going out and did such a fantastic evaluation and explained to us that whole issue and the fact that they don't feel that any appreciable runoff will result as a part of this development, I think I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you. I will be supporting this also. One thing is that we did ask staff to go back and look at the lake issues, to look at the runoff issues from the other developments, and what I hear tonight, five basins are maintained, one is being addressed with the development, the one that has an issue that was dated prior to the current laws we have in place for that. So I think staff has answered our questions, and legally, we've heard the ramifications as well, and so I will be supporting this project. Is there any further discussion? Any further? All right, so if there's no further discussion, I call for the vote. And the motion passes. One abstain, one no, and five yes. All right, next is a motion to further discuss or cast your vote to approve the conditional use permit.
Madam Mayor, I move the conditional use.
The resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There is a motion and second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Perrow.
No.
No? Okay. All right, thank you. If there's, oh.
No.
If there's no further motion, please cast your vote, or no discussion, please cast your vote.
The same.
Yeah. And the motion passes, five, with one no and one abstentia. Thank you. Next is number 11, review of transportation projects and consider them for additions to the city's capital improvement program, CIP program, and approve a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to VDOT to include these projects in the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 revenue-sharing program. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests, and this is Mr. Newland.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is before you tonight to pass a resolution to apply to the Virginia Department of Transportation for five projects for the revenue-sharing project, program. Actually, it is for the FY 2122, as is stated correctly in the resolution. It's just in the recommendation that the dates were off.
Thank you, Mr. Newland. This did go to the Physical Development Committee on July 9th and September 10th, so I'll turn to our Chair, Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Physical Development Committee did review this, and without spilling any coffee at that meeting. And if I can get my agenda back open, we're not, oh, I thought we'd be able to see what the disposition was on the screen of the projects. If I recall correctly, without looking at, there are several projects that are considered for funding. The sum of those projects equals the amount of money that we'd be requesting for the revenue sharing. The dollars in projects seemed in alignment. We have the right to make adjustments in the future, but we need to get the application in, and so therefore, PDC agreed that this needs to be put forward to the state, and I'll make that motion on behalf of PDC.
Thank you. And because it went to PDC, there's no need for a second. Is there a discussion?
Councilmember Halcison.
And so, I guess I'm the only one that's been here through, this is now the fourth phase of Fifth Street funding. What is this going to do, and is this $2 million bucks, is it all coming from the state, or is it going to be our local taxpayers?
Fifth Street, Phase 4 here, is from Taylor Street down to Fillmore, which is the section that has not been completed yet. It is mainly ADA improvements, taking out the concrete pavement that constantly breaks and cracks up, it's got the regular bumps as you go down through it. So it's more of a maintenance reconstruction project than it is a Fifth Street corridor project, as the others with the additional bricks and that type of thing, but there will be sidewalk work and ADA improvements that will take place in this project. And the total project is, if I may, is actually a $6 million project. We have already asked for revenue sharing in prior years and gotten it, and this today is, we'll be asking for an additional $2 million.
So we have $4 million from revenue sharing that we don't, the local taxpayer doesn't pay for, and we're asking for an additional $2? Or is it the $4 million, the original revenue sharing, 50/50?
Yes, they're all 50/50. The additional $2 that we are asking for is half city and half revenue sharing, so it's a $6 million project. $3 million will be from the state, and $3 million will be from local funds.
Now, if we don't get that, so have we already got approval of the revenue sharing?
We do have the first $4 million. This is an additional $2 million that we have to apply for. It is a, being a continuing project that has already been funded once, it will be a top-tier project with VDOT, so the likelihood of it being funded is very great.
So did the additional $2 million request versus the original $4 million, did the project, the scope go up, or the cost just went up?
No, sir. The, when we requested the $4 million previously, it was at our maximum that we could request. If you remember earlier in the work session, Ms. Hart said that we can request up to $10 million per two-year cycle. We had topped out her request last time on Fifth Street, Phase 4, so we needed more money, but we could not ask for it previously.
And so with that, so we, so we're up to the maximum, now we could allocate those in different projects if we didn't do that one, or is that not an ability?
The project that we have requested, we request for specific projects through the revenue-sharing project. So the projects that we have requested are the projects that we are telling the state that we are trying to get done.
Okay, and so all four of the, or
There's five.
Five of these are all within that $10 million max?
Yes, sir. It's a total here at $7.1 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Wilder.
You know, I've received a lot of calls and references, especially at the sidewalk area, well, not talking about sidewalk again, but on the Fifth Street portion, that's so uneven, so I'm glad to see we're finally getting to that portion, I mean, finishing up the last part of Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Wilder. Councilmember Perrow?
Councilmember Perrow.
Uneven is an interesting word to describe it. I think I've seen retaining wall about a 45-degree angle as I've walked down there, leaning into the sidewalk. So there's a significant amount of, it looks like grading, retaining wall work that has to be done. I think that's driving the cost up. It's work that needs to be done if we can get, specifically, the infrastructure work needs to be done. If we can get VDOT to pay for half of it, please.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Newland. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019 detention home fund budget to appropriate $17,995 for a welding simulator, and $5,000 for additional supplies for the Community Placement Program, or CPP, juveniles with resources from the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice Community Placement Program. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Rosser.
Good evening, Mayor Tweedy, and members of council. The welding simulator program is designed to teach students basic welding skills and techniques. Students will receive a certificate from Central Virginia Community College upon completion of the program. The program is designed to enhance skills and employability once the students are released from the detention center. The additional supplies are needed to provide uniforms and other supplies that they need in the CPP program. So basically, it's an opportunity for juveniles who are at the, in the CPP to get a certificate and an employable skill, so once they leave, the whole goal is to reduce recidivism and give them a means to take care of themselves.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosser. And this did go to the Finance Committee, so I will turn to its chair, Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We discussed this, it was from last year's, the 2019, and so this is somewhat of a cleanup since it's, I think it's already happened. So the Finance Committee met and discussed it and made approval and a motion for council.
All right, thank you. And there's no second needed. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wilder.
When I saw this, I was really intrigued about that, because I know when we go through different business seminars, the biggest question that the businesses are saying that they need more welders is always, I think one businessperson said it, every day they need about 60 welders, and it's always a consistent need. So I'm so glad to see us capitalizing on that need for our business community again. Now, so it's basically, just real briefly, it's a simulator?
It is a simulator. It looks like a big video machine, and you have to put the helmet on and the goggles on, and it's kind of scary when you think about it, because it really does simulate welding. You can see the fire on the, I mean, it's all a simulator, but it's a very realistic simulator.
And they're receiving a certificate from CVCC?
Yes, sir.
So it's like the regular certificate for the welding program they have there, or portion?
It's a modified certificate.
And how long is that particular program?
That's a good question. They've had it over there for about four months, so I will have to double-check just to see how long it actually is. But they're excited about it.
I would like to get more information, because we're looking at just different things that we can do on-site in our location. So I'm always looking for other things, especially knowing the need that there is as a community for welders. So we're always trying to find some pre-type programs, so I would love to get more information on that.
Okay. Well, this one is actually housed in the detention center?
I'm not, no, I'm not trying to, no, no.
Okay, all right, let's just clarify that, okay.
I'm not trying to go there or somebody get there, but again, maybe at my location, we could look into something of that nature. So I just want to know more about that, to see if it's a feasibility, and is that the total cost, the 17 plus?
That is the total cost. The total cost of the simulator is about $18,000, and the $5,000 is for any additional supplies that they might need for it.
So I just love to have more information about that.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dola.
I'm just curious, how many kids do you expect to go through this program, like say, in a year or two?
Well, we are certified for eight participants in our CPP program. The actual number that's participating, I'm not sure, but I can find out, because the other thing they want is a barber chair over there as well. Just, that's another marketable skill. It's a good skill for them to have, but I can find out specifically how many are participating.
Thank you.
And get that information back to you.
Thank you, and I do know if there's no further discussion, I know Virginia Technical Institute has a simulator, or a couple of simulators in their program as well, and they partner with CVCC on welding, and I know it's way down there, but it's still, they have students from the city that go down there. And you also stated that there's case management for those?
Yes, we have a full-time case manager. To ensure that we aren't just dropping them off in the community, but to ensure that they are following through, and what other services that they might need to ensure that they're successful.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment, I'm just so pleased about this, because it does mesh and conform to our Bridges to Progress policies and initiatives, allowing young persons to come out with a marketable skill and a certificate, so as to have, be able to move forward and have an opportunity to improve themselves and their families.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote.
We have a waiting list for this, getting into the program.
No waiting list, thank you. Let's see, and the motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much, good luck. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of $34,930 to purchase law enforcement equipment for the Lynchburg Police Department, Lynchburg Sheriff's Office, and the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Chief Sudima, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this went in front of Finance Committee this morning. This is an annual grant we get each year. This is the, you're authorizing our submission for this grant, as you see below you. We'll be using it, the Police Department, for a camera for Community Relations Coordinator, cameras for some electronic surveillance, and some accessories for firearms for our tactical unit. The Sheriff's Office will be using that for a voice-recording system that's outdated, needs to be upgraded to record their communications, and then the Commonwealth Attorney's Office will be using it for one laptop and one desktop computer. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Chief Sudima. This did go to the Finance Committee this morning. Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the chief had stated, this is a criminal justice grant, and it's, the intent is to award, to receive award for police, our Commonwealth Attorney, and as well as the Sheriff's Office. This is an application, and we hope we get it, and we put that forward as a motion from the committee.
Thank you. There's no second. Is there any further questions? All right, please cast your vote. And that motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $55,335 with resources of $36,890 from the Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Grant, and in-kind service and equipment match of $15,767 and $2,678 transferred from the fiscal year 2020 general fund Police Department budget to provide selective enforcement activities and attend related training. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Chief Sudima again.
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is a recurring grant that we apply for each year and lucky enough to be awarded. This did go in front of Finance Committee this morning. That money that is required in a match is already accounted for in our current fiscal year budget. It again will be used for selective enforcement DUI alcohol-related testing equipment, as well as training in that area.
Thank you, and this did go to the Finance Committee this morning. Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a highway safety grant that has been awarded, and the chief and the Police Administration have already budgeted for that, as the chief has said that this is a recurring grant, and so with that recurring grant, they've been kind enough to us at the Finance Committee to budget for it in their, the match that is required in their current budget, and so we bring that forward as a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. No second necessary. Any further discussion or questions? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, seven to zero. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $22,575 with resources of $15,050 from the Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Grant, and in-kind service and equipment match of $6,374 and $1,151 transferred from the fiscal year 2020 general fund Police Department budget to provide funds for speed enforcement activities. Chief Sudima again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, mirrors the DUI grant, just the speed enforcement is the focus as opposed to DUI. Again, we have the related match that's required in our department's current fiscal year budget. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Higginson, we'll turn to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another highway safety grant. We're thankful that the Police Department has applied for it, has got it, and has the match already budgeted, and we bring that forward as a recommendation.
All right, thank you. If there are no further questions, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, and good luck with all the projects. Thank you. Consideration next of authorizing staff to expend $2,600 of the available fiscal year 2020 general fund non-departmental poverty initiative budget to support the training and community awareness facets of the city's ongoing poverty reduction effort. Funding is requested for Bridges Out of Poverty facilitator training for two persons, scheduled to begin October 9th online. And Mr. Hughes will make this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is simply for two staff members to undergo, complete the training with Bridges Out of Poverty to become facilitators. We typically pay, the city pays for facilitators from the company AHA process to come in at a cost at about $3,000-plus per facilitator. This was a lifetime training, it's about $1,300, and then as long as the staff stay here, then we would not have to pay for the group trainings that we hold on occasion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is there a motion to approve this expenditure?
Is that moved?
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Wilder, do you have any further discussion?
No, it's a way of, I'm saving on some funds in the future, so I'll just approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion? Councilmember Higginson.
So how long is the training?
How long does it last?
Yeah, how long, yes, how long is the training?
Oh, it's a lifetime.
Well, I mean, how long is the actual training? Is it?
Six days.
Yes, six days.
Six days?
Correct.
Okay. So like, all day of training?
Right.
So the staff people, so they're going to be doing this online here, rather than going somewhere?
Right. Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much. And that is all of our, anything?
I've been here for a long day.
All right.[1781.12]